This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 22nd. Please stand for our invocation. Ed Conick, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Let's place ourselves in the presence of the Lord, your Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. To heavenly Lord, we thank you for this occasion as we come together, the city council and the mayor, and we ask your blessings upon them as they discuss the business of this city, and always bless them with wisdom and knowledge and compassion and love to do the right things at the right time for all the citizens. And we ask for protection for all our citizens, our first responders and their families. We ask you to just bless this meeting in a special way to encourage all the citizens to know that this is one nation under God, and we have respect for everyone. And we ask that blessings upon each and every one, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory. Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our August 22nd meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, please at this time, put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution to ordinance appeal a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to that council meeting, such that he or she wishing to address the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile Business. Any person that has not given a proper notice to the city clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to do so. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that the time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Now, the city clerk.
Approve of minutes of August 15th.
Don't move.
Second.
They're promptly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communications from Mayor Simpson.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see everyone this morning. Thank you for being here. A couple of announcements this morning. One has to do with the ongoing renovations to Beenville Square. From where we are at this point in time, we're going to have to close the park for public access, so we'll start putting up fencing around the park immediately. Full renovations will begin shortly after the fence is in place. Then upgrades are going to include new sidewalks, new lighting, bluestone pavers, landscaping on the seat wall kind of around where the fountain is. If you recall, it was probably more than a year ago that we actually removed the fountain, sent it to the manufacturer, and it's been completely rebuilt. It should last another 100 years, so we're very excited about being able to put it back in place. We're hoping that the project will conclude probably maybe at the end of 2023, the end of this calendar year. If not, it will certainly be concluding at the beginning of 2024. On Friday, we delivered the budget to the city council as requested, as required by the Zogby Act, and so we look forward over the next few weeks to discussing the budget items with, with the council. I would say that the city is in strong financial shape. There are some differences in this budget compared to previous budgets because we have 19,000 new citizens that will be paying taxes into the city as part of their sales taxes at this point in time. So anyway, there's certainly some changes. I imagine that there'll be a lot of questions, but we look forward to working with the council to get the budget passed on time, which is around September 20th. I want to compliment C. Sapp. C., raise your hand. So raise it high. Okay. C. has done yeoman's work with all of our department heads and with everybody involved to make sure that she presented a balanced budget, and we tremendously grateful to C., her team, as well as the department heads that have worked with her to make this happen. So that would conclude my remarks at this time. Mr. President.
The clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
They're promptly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The gentleman's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for waive the notice ordinance on December 2nd in Tristan-Canoe Park, October 19th in Mardi Gras Park, October 28th in Mardi Gras Park, September 17th in Melavanna Park, August 26th in Langham Park, and, I'm sorry, September 30th on Lashure Road.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I'd like to modify the Lashure Road waiver.
Yeah, let's bring this to a vote first. So move.
Second.
Promptly move in second. Any discussion, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to modify the Lashure Road waiver to end at 12:00 midnight.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Public hearings today. It's a public hearing to declare the structure at 1861 LaSalle Street, 2510 Green Lawn Drive, 1157 Kentucky Street, 3105 Emily Drive, 400 LaRose Drive. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished and are secured.
This opened up the public hearings for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? Just so you may come down to the podium by stating your name.
Good morning. My name is Richie Prince. I live in Spanishport. I'm calling, I'm, uh, I'm here to address the council regarding 400 LaRose Drive. I represent the mortgage holder. Mortgage holder has been in contact with the owner, who is out of town. That's why I'm here. The owner has apparently undertaken the renovations and repairs. He's not completed them yet. I understand there's permits that need to be pulled for some of the repairs he's done. He has not pulled those permits yet, but that is something that he plans to do. I would respectfully request the council table this for 60 days to get those repairs completed.
And we won't table it. Table it. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Do we want to hear from Mr. Doffenbach? Oh, you're, okay. 60 days, right? Yeah.
Layover for sister day, not table.
Yes, sir.
Layover.
Okay. Layover, 60 days.
We'll take care of that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Todd Seabor, and, and I'm, my wife and I are the owners at 3105 Emily Drive. We had a fire. Someone set the fire that was renting the property. We've been in the, in the midst of getting it cleaned up. They had a, some kind of a truck repair business there. I just got the last truck removed this week. We've reclaimed the yard. We're, we're requesting to be able to rebuild. It's, it's all we have. We've been reduced to renters, so we'd like to rebuild our house.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So I looked at the pictures. It was a pretty bad fire. Sorry that happened to you. Is the, is the structure salvageable? Is that, are you suggesting that it could be rebuilt in its current?
Yeah, I, I plan to probably take two-thirds of the roof off, rafters and all, and build it back more square footage and better than it was, but I, I don't, there's no cracks in the foundation that I can see anywhere. There was a write-up of some kind of erosion, you know, of the foundation. I, I, there's no erosion anywhere that I can see. I don't see any problem at all. I think it will cost us, we'll have to do it ourselves. We were uninsured, so I think I can do it for $50,000 or $60,000 in a year and a half.
Sure. Um, when was the fire?
The weekend before Mother's Day. Saturday before Mother's Day. We've been all, it, it's still under investigation. The person that set the fire has been convicted of arson in the past, and I hope he's convicted again and maybe spend some jail time this time, but it's still under investigation. We're still waiting. Officer Micah Collins is investigating, and we're still waiting on forensics to come back. It's the only reason we really haven't dug in hard to the garage, which was where the fire was, because.
Well, I'd ask, I'd ask something from you, and then I'm going to ask something from the city. Can you help us abate this nuisance, the, the problem of it being sort of an unsafe structure?
Yes, sir.
So is there a possibility that you can go out very quickly and tear down, you know, this section that you're going to start your demo?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think you'll have to get a permit to do that, but if you could work with the city's permitting department to get that demolition permit so that you can start the demo.
We'll do that.
I think that'll help us out in the community a tremendous amount. With that, I'll, I'll hold this over 60 days so that you'll have the opportunity to begin your demo.
Okay.
Okay?
Then we need to come back in 60 to a meeting or?
You'll work with the permitting or the municipal enforcement department, Mr. David Doffenbach. He's sitting right up there in the white shirt. He'll guide you through the process.
Thank you, sir.
And, and hopefully, we will not have to declare it a public nuisance because you'll be on your way with repairs within 60 days.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry again that that happened to you.
Is there anyone else, President, that would like to address the council on these particular said items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, James Jackson, Jr.
Good morning, everyone. James Jackson, Jr., 224 Garrison Avenue. I am CEO of J45 Empire. I'm a social and civil rights activist. I'm also the co-host of the Big Yawn J45 Live Morning Show, which is streaming live right now on Facebook. Before I start, I just want everybody to have prayer for me and my family. We had a house fire yesterday, so keep me in y'all prayers, my family. I'm here to talk about transparency, about J1 Dallas, who was, uh, he, he passed away on by being confronted by MPD. I'm here to ask you to advocate that this video be put out because us, the taxpayers, we paid for these body cams, so why is not, why isn't the video being put out for transparency so there won't be any hearsay? He say hearsay because we have witnesses that say he was beaten, but MPD chief says different. We want to see the video so we have transparency. The family deserves that clarity, so I'm going to keep it short and sweet because I got tend to my family, but just for J, say no more, show the video. Lack of integrity and transparency is not one of them. Thank you for your time.
Lou Allen Timms.
Lou Allen Timms available, present.
Phil Williams.
Williams, present.
Christine Dallas.
Ms. Dallas, present.
Carolina Dallas.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
71 West Grant Street, Chickasaw, Alabama. I am the sister of J1 Dallas. I also want transparency. I want to see the video. I feel like the community, our base, base, Texas, and I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you for your time.
Ask the city attorney at this time to, to address these situations.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, want to acknowledge that anytime we have a loss of life in the city, it's, it weighs heavily. It is, it's a tragedy in itself. As far as the, the comments that were made and asking about the body cams from MPD, as you all know and have been informed, there's a three-part criminal investigation going on. We have self-reported to Main Justice, and that's being conducted by the FBI. We, of course, turned it over to DA's office, and then we have our own internal investigation. As soon as the criminal investigation by the district attorney's office, the grand jury has been presented to, with regard to this death, we'll be sitting down with the family and their attorney and allowing them to see the video. We don't do that until the criminal investigation is over because it is now part of the grand jury process, and that is protected by law. The law that goes into effect September 1st, we'll follow that as well. As I said, as soon as the criminal investigation is over, I've informed counsel for the family that we would sit down with him and allow him to view the video, but also allow the family members to view the video as well at the conclusion of the criminal investigation.
And this has been explained to the family, attorney, correct?
The, the part about them being able to view it after the criminal investigation, that, that has been communicated to their counsel, but I've not had any direct contact with the family.
Any question from this council?
Oh, Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
From Mr. Woods. Mr. Woods, there are three investigations going on. The internal police investigation, district attorney, and the FBI, correct?
Correct.
And has the video been provided to the district attorney and to the FBI?
It has. It has been provided to those organizations, which is why we're not allowed to release it until at least the DA's investigation is over.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other question from this council? Before we move on, I wanted to recognize two students from the Revelation Baptist Church Christian School, and also the principal, Ms. Kasher. They did have the opportunity to visit us during pre-council, and they also visited us during the council meeting, and we appreciate y'all coming this morning. The clerk.
Kenneth Havens, regarding 21938.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Havens. I reside at 11381 Howells Ferry Road in Sims, Alabama. I am the owner of A1 McDuffie Sanitation, a mobile company that has provided service in the newly annexed area for the past 25 years. We have the equipment and the manpower to be able to service these areas and to meet these needs. During the bid process, whenever the bids were opened, the lowest bidder did not complete, submit a complete bid package. There was portions of the addendum that stated that they had to be included with the bid package. That was not, and we're asking from our company to the city council of Mobile either to split the bid between Waste Pro and A1 McDuffie Sanitation or to put it out for rebid. Thank you.
And of course, there's a comments from the council.
I, I would ask the administration the possibilities of splitting or rebidding and still meeting the deadline of October 2nd of providing services. Is that, is that a possibility?
It is not. It is not.
Hold on, Mr. Carroll. Uh, Mr. Reynolds? Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, Mr. President, normally in a bid opening, if there are any irregularities in a bid submission, they're noted on the bid tabulation sheet. Who, the question is, is, uh, were these bids submitted to the city clerk? And if so, were there any irregularities noted from any company that submitted bids?
No, and no. And one, that's not part of our process. You know, the procurement, the procurement department takes care of the bids, and what we submit is the lowest responsive bidder pursuant to law. That gets submitted to the clerk, but we don't submit all three.
Well, at the bid opening, normally, I would think that if there was something missing in the bid form, lowest responsible bidder means that all line items in the bid are, are answered correctly or not, and if they're not answered, then the bid is incomplete. So I guess my question again was, is that were there any irregularities in the bid submission?
No, no. What, what you have is, so you, you always have, you know, technical issues that, that pop up, but nothing that would have required us to throw the bid out, not, not as in this instance. And that, look, you have to understand where the gentleman is coming from and saying, look, he wants to be included, but he's not the lowest responsive bidder. So in taking into account, you know, what you're asking, no, there's, there's no problem with the bid, and it is the lowest responsible bidder, and we have submitted that to the council and to the clerk's office.
The reason why I ask that is because I heard the sentence that said that there was alternates that were left off of another bid, so that's why I'm asking that question. So if you're saying that if there are alternates left off, then that does not affect his response to the request for bid.
I don't think I understand your question.
Uh, I, I heard him say that there were, in the other responsive bidder, that there were line items that were left off, meaning alternates. I think he's, I heard him say there were alternates that were not answered. If there were alternates that were not answered, you're telling me that the absence of those alternates did not affect him being the lowest responsive bidder?
That, that's correct. That, that is correct. It, it does not change the pricing. It does not change the capacity, doesn't change the capability, ability, does not change the comprehensive specs.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Dave.
Not to put too fine a point on this, but I hear you saying, excuse me, but I hear you saying, Mr. Woods, is that after examining all the bids, all the bids that were submitted, that they were all in order, and there was no omission in any of them that would cause such a bid to be rejected?
None of them were, none of them were, we didn't reject this one, so I, what I can tell you this is, the one that we received, there were no problems with it, all right? And there were no problems other than price with McDuffie.
There was no, there was no problem whatsoever with the one that's before us today.
That's correct.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Would also, is it any guideline that they, like, I guess, completion of the bid has to be in place? Do y'all have any procedures for that?
Yes, you, I mean, you have to respond to, to the bid. You have to respond to the questions. You have to make sure that you answer the questions that we're asking to our satisfaction, and the satisfaction of not only the city, but the procurement department, and you have to follow the bid laws. So we've done that here. I mean, you're more than welcome to look at the bid.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Quick con. I've been speaking to Mr. Havens, and we did look into the possibility of splitting the contract, but you have to realize that it went out on RFP with a certain number of houses, and that's how they priced their bid based on that number. So to come in and change the number of houses would have ruined our bid process. The, the other thing is it does allow for us to do a backup contract. We're currently negotiating with McDuffie to assume a backup contract, not just for the annexation area, but to back up city services completely throughout the city. So we, we continue with those negotiations.
Thank you.
Ordinance is held over. 64038, rezoned property located at the southwest corner of Monday Street and St. Meter Street, extending to the northwest corner of Hercules Street and Monday Street from R2 to R3.
Uh, Mr. President, before y'all move on this, I must recuse myself from this item. I will not be voting on it.
So move. Second.
They're promptly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over. 03867, appoint members to the Mobile Historic Development Commission.
So move. Second.
They're promptly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
40870, fixed cost for demolition of structure at 310 Hossvelt Lane.
So move. Second.
They're promptly moved to second. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Yeah, we held this property, um, just over from last week. Mr. Doffenbach, um, had a discussion. Can you explain about this property?
Yes, sir. We, if you remember last week at 310 Hossvelt Lane, this was the demolition. The owner came down and expressed his unhappiness with being assessed demolition cost, which is, this is the fixed cost resolution, fixed actual demolition cost. The one thing that we didn't know was when he came into the picture and how, the deed that he had, he expressed he had a foreclosure deed, which we did find. And in that deed, we found some answers to our questions on whether or not Mr. Bush received notice. And I believe he did, and if you can follow with me, I'll explain why. That Mr. Bush did come in at the end of our process. It was just days before we issued a notice to proceed to demolish the house. So he did come in. He did submit a bid to the foreclosing agent, which is a sub-company of who we noticed at the very beginning, the mortgage company, called Florida. There were several murders, and it was part of a foreclosure. He did buy at auction a foreclosure deed, but that deed has, it's subjected to limitations. Those limitations are as follows. The property was conveyed to Mr. Bush as is, where is, basic, I'm sorry, basis subject to easements and encumbrances, which the city did file, pending since the very beginning and when it was declared a public nuisance. So we have two list pendants on file, encumbrances, and exceptions reflected in the mortgage. Further on, it goes into, the property was conveyed, subject to Alabama's rights and redemption laws, all recorded mortgages, so if there's second mortgages, they still would apply. Incumbrances, the city's list pendants, recorded or unrecorded easements, liens, tax assessments, rights of way, and here's, very, pay close attention to this one, and other matters of record in the probate office. So the deed that Mr. Bush received is giving him notice to check, check probate court, which is where the city has two recorded list pendants, giving notice of the action. Now, would he have known the demolition cost at that time? No, because like I said before, he came into the picture purchasing this deed, the foreclosure deed, days before the notice to proceed to demolition. So I believe he did receive notice through his, his deed, if you read the fine print, that he purchased a foreclosure deed, not a warranty deed with his.
And from talking to you, we also have a, is a program that he could apply for?
Yes.
To get this way? Okay.
Yes. In certain instances, the neighborhood development department has a program that he can apply for to request reducing or elimination of the municipal lien. There's programs that would apply to him, but he's going to need to apply to see if he needs those. So there is a program.
Thank you, Mr. Dave. So, Mr. Bush, you'll be able to apply for a program going forward to waive the lien on the property because the house was, was already, was a note. So you can give Mr. Doffenbach, and he'll talk to you through the, how to apply for that program. Thank you.
Any other discussion from this council? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
40874, fixed cost for demolition of structure at 1212 Seneca Street.
They'll move to layover for one week.
Second.
Promptly move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't layover for one week.
CIP resolutions held over. 21886, authorized contract with Mike Four, Inc., construction for playground demolition at Fry and Mill Street Park. 21887, authorized contract with Backman Russell Electric for traffic signal upgrades at Hillcrest and Cottage Hill Road.
So move. Second.
They're promptly moved to second. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Yeah, just want to let everyone know in District 1 with Mill Street Park with the demolition, we will be receiving a new playground. we will be, um, receiving a new per, um, playground for the area. So we have the, the demolished to get, to receive new. So, um, new playground will be coming. Um, it's gonna be beautiful. We had the opportunity to already receive feedback from the community, and so we really excited about that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. Zero-one-eight-eight-eight, authorized agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for U.S. Highway forty-five street skate improvements. Zero-one-eight-eight-nine, eight-ninety, eight-ninety-one, and eight-ninety-two are authorizing agreements with Brandon Charles, Sebastian Torres, Conz Loeb, Elaine Campbell to provide tennis lessons and clinics for Parks and Recreation Department. Zero-eight-eight-ninety-three, approved purchase orders for fuel for various city departments. Zero-eight-eight-ninety-four, approved purchase order to Dennis Aluminum Products for decorative aluminum signposts. Zero-eight-eight-ninety-five, approved purchase order to Interface Services for carpeting for offices on the fifth floor of Government Plaza. Zero-eight-eight-ninety-six, approved purchase order to Jubilee Bay before for holiday decorations. Zero-eight-eight-ninety-seven, approved purchase order to Cronus Incorporated for annual renewal of health staff workforce management software. Zero-eight-eight-ninety-eight, approved purchase order to Verti Corporation for annual renewal of maintenance services. MIT Data Center Cooling System. Twenty-one-eight-ninety-nine, authorized consulting contract with Bard and Associates for construction administration for cathodic protection system for bulkhead at, uh, Gulf Quest and the Cruise Terminal. Twenty-one-nine-hundred, authorized contract with Allied Erosion Industries for installation of cathodic protection system for bulkhead at Gulf Quest and the Cruise Terminal. Twenty-one-nine-zero-one.
I want to ask you to take that one separate.
Okay. Uh, thirty-one-nine-oh-two, adopt the allocation provided by ADECA for the CDBG Dr. Planning Award. Forty-nine-oh-three, authorized to purchase of forty-two thirty-one Shipyard Road with Gomisa grant funds. Forty-seven-nine-oh-four, nine-oh-five, and nine-oh-six are sending to the vacation of a portion of an alley adjacent to twenty-four-eleven Wilson Avenue, sending to the vacation of a portion of U.S. Highway ninety west service road and considering a vacation right-of-way fee as a condition of the vacation of a portion of U.S. Highway ninety west service road.
So move. Second.
And promptly moving second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Twenty-one-nine-zero-one, authorized contract with Boken and Associates for professional program management services for the Civic Center.
So move. Second.
And promptly moving second in a discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Carroll.
I'm gonna ask that we lay this over a week, um, with the anticipation of, uh, trying to find, uh, a suitable, uh, way to move forward to make sure that we adhere to the conversations that we had today during pre-council.
I'm gonna join Mr. Carroll. I ask that we also would lay this over for one week, uh, council. Make sure that everybody is ready to really vote on this particular item. Um, is there any other discussion while we're on discussions? Uh, so we need to...
Oh, well, there's a motion on the floor that was accepted. Uh, that motion will either have to carry or have to be rescinded in order to offer a motion to layover.
I would ask the person to rescind. If not, we just want to vote and vote for it. Yeah.
All right, motion to layover for one week.
Second. Uh, we're doing correct. In a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't layover for one week.
Ordinance is being introduced. Twenty-five-zero thirty-nine.
For council rules, this will layover for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced. Zero-three-nine-zero-eight, through sixty-nine-one-nine.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read with the exception of zero-eight dash nine twenty-seven. I'm sorry.
No?
No.
No.
I'm a page ahead.
We're taking all of these.
Yeah, please waive the rule.
Second.
And promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Zero-three-nine-zero-eight, appoint Emma Holt to the Mobile City County Youth Council. Thirty-one-nine-zero-nine, authorized grant application to United States, uh, um, thirty-one-nine-zero-nine and nine-ten are authorizing grant applications to the United States Tennis Association for port resurfacing and light and electric control panels, no local matches. Forty, um, nine-eleven, nine-twelve, and nine-thirteen are declaring the structures at, uh, eighty, eighteen-sixty-one LaSalle Street, twenty-five-ten Green Lawn Drive, and eleven-fifty-seven Kentucky Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished and secured. Forty-six-nine-sixteen, rename Lafayette Heights Park to historic Lafayette Heights Neighborhood Park. Forty-six-nine-seventeen, name the multipurpose athletic field at Thomas Sullivan Park to the coach, to Coach Herschel Wilson Senior Multipurpose Athletic Field. Fifty-eight-nine-eighteen, declare weeds noxious group sixteen forty-six. Sixty-nine-nineteen, determine an appropriation to Mobile Bay Area Veterans Day Commission serves a public purpose and approving payment.
So move. Second.
And promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Forty-nine-fourteen and nine-fifteen are declaring the structures at thirty-one-oh-five Emily Drive and four hundred LaRose Drive, public nuisances and ordering them demolished and secured.
Move to layover sixty days. Second.
And promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't layover for sixty days.
CIP resolutions being introduced. Zero-eight-nine-twenty, twenty-one-nine-twenty-one.
For council rules, these will layover for one week.
Resolutions being introduced. Zero-one-nine-twenty-two through sixty-nine forty-four.
For council rules, these will layover for one week with the exception of zero-eight dash nine-two-seven.
Second.
And promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a flirt.
Zero-eight-nine-twenty-seven, approved purchase order to Quick Buildings LLC for portable staff building for DIP recycling drop-off site.
So move.
Second.
And promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Announcements.
Uh, District Five, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the mayor mentioned, uh, he delivered the proposed fiscal twenty-twenty-four budget to the city council on last Friday. The council has adopted the following schedule with respect to the budget. Next week, on August twenty-ninth, the council will have a finance committee meeting at one-thirty PM on the ninth floor, uh, the ninth floor, the ninth floor meeting room. This will be for preliminary discussions by council members with the administration. There will be no public comment at this meeting, this work session. On September fifth, we will have the public hearing on the budget. That will be an offer, that will be a time for the, uh, for citizens to offer any comments they may, may wish to make with respect to the budget. On September twelfth, Tuesday, September twelfth, we'll have another finance committee meeting for further discussions. That will also be at one-thirty PM in the council conference room on the ninth floor. Again, no public comment will be taken. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Davis. Councilman, uh, Carroll, District Two.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. On, uh, this weekend, uh, again, Mobile Parks and Recreation did a great job with, uh, the STEM program at the Sullivan Center and having all the kids from around the district and also out the district. A huge affair. Uh, again, thank you to, uh, Bishop State and their, uh, nursing program and the University of South Alabama for their nursing program and, uh, uh, doctoral program, uh, for all the assistance in helping these kids, uh, uh, take part in this, uh, uh, great event with, uh, STEM program and information. Um, I look forward to, uh, get, going through the budget, uh, and as always, District Two, uh, we will be posting a link to the budget on our newsletter for everyone to review and comment. Uh, if you have comments, feel, please free, feel free to email your comments to me, uh, if in concern so that I can look at them and the council can look at them at the same time, uh, as it may concern our district. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Carroll. Uh, District, uh, Six, Councilman Woods.
Um, yeah, so, uh, obviously I'll do my spill. Uh, make sure you download the three-one-one app, District Six, and sign up for the, uh, the newsletter that, that comes out weekly. Um, and, uh, update on a meeting we should hopefully set a date, hopefully this week for our first community meeting. So, um, hopefully I'll, I can get that out pretty quick, fast in a hurry. And, um, I did want to point out too that, um, traffic's always a big issue in District Six. And, uh, today, uh, a contract with Bagman Russell to, to start working on and correct the, the Hillcrest and Cottage Hill, um, those two, three lights there. So, um, major, major changes coming. Um, that's gonna, that's gonna be a big, big, big thing. And, and, uh, just, uh, just another, another way the city's working for District Six.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the city council has approved the purchase of, uh, Shipyard Road, a property on Shipyard Road by way of the Gulf of Mexico Energy Security Act funds. Uh, these funds are created through royalties from oil and gas production throughout the Gulf of Mexico. And we were fortunate enough to work with the Department of Conservation and National Resources in Alabama to secure this site as a future place to access our waterway, uh, predominantly by those folks that are south of Falls Mill Creek and west of Dog River. Uh, there is no public access to the waterway, to Dog River, um, in this area. So this is gonna be an exciting process that I intend to meet with the community about, work with, uh, our design professionals on coming up with, uh, um, an adequate solution for increased access in the area. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, today we approved the, um, street skate improvement agreement today. I'm really excited about that for Highway forty-five. We have been meeting with the Tomerville community, um, throughout this year, and we're just finishing, um, a draft of plan. And a lot of people always ask, like, why are you doing this plan? So I want to thank the administration for their support as well with helping completing this plan. But this plan is basically gonna give us the opportunity to better our community. If you don't have a plan in place, then it's hard to apply for grants. There's opportunities with the MPO from a federal and state level. Um, and now we have a plan. We know the needs and we receive that information from the community. And so, um, today we approve a project that's a part of revitalizing our community and the Tomerville community, and we're really, um, happy for that to happen. So more information, I want to thank all the constituents that came out, all the, probably have about five to six meetings this past year working on this plan. Um, and we already created groups that will be working on different projects throughout the Tomerville community. We can do it in the Tomerville community, we can do, do it throughout our other communities, um, in District One. And so, um, thank you again to all the constituents. We will start having some of our community meetings starting back in October. So more information, make sure you receive and you register for our newsletter, and more information will be coming out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good news for those of you who, uh, have been used to using, uh, North McGregor Avenue as a through route. Uh, coming very soon, hopefully sooner rather than later, uh, North McGregor Avenue will open. If you have ventured to try to look to see where we were on the improvements, you've noticed some resurfacing going on as well as striping. So coming soon, uh, we will be able to, uh, get it open, and I'm sure as soon as that is official, we will put the word out so that everybody will know. This coming Thursday, I'll be joining members of the administration to meet with some of the newly annexed Homeowners Association members that are in my district now. So, Councilman Wood, you may have the largest district, uh, mine is the second largest district. So we'll be going over all the details of, um, garbage and trash collection, uh, ordinances when they take effect, and any other questions that they have. So I just look forward to, uh, joining the members of the administration and meeting with our new residents, uh, and getting to know them better, and then soon being able to, um, schedule some community meetings throughout the district. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice President. District Five, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to correct something I said earlier. The, uh, finance committee meetings on August twenty-ninth and September twelfth will be at one o'clock PM, not one-thirty, in the council conference room on the ninth floor.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. And also I would like to announce that we will have a committee meeting immediate following the finance committee meeting on next Tuesday, um, dealing with the ordinance twenty-five dash zero-three-nine, uh, the garbage, trash, and litter. And I'll again, I'll sign this to the public service, but we'll have this immediate follow the finance committee on next Tuesday. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
And promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This means adjourn.